Good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, May 5th, 2025 at 5:00 PM, and I will call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following three reasons. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirement, specifically General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22, for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes for approval and determining whether such minutes shall be released in the matter of approving, not releasing, the executive session minutes from 3/3/2025 and 3/24/2025. Number two, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Police Chief. And number three, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. I do. So with that, I entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Motion made.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in executive session.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes. We are now in executive session. All right, everyone. We are back from executive session. Continue on with the meeting. So going right on to Agenda Item Number 4. Discussion whether to approve the open session minutes from 4/9/2025. I looked them over, didn't see anything wrong.
Likewise.
Good. So, all right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 4/9/2025.
Motion made.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number 5. Discussion vote whether to open, add, and remove articles, close and finalize the annual and special town meeting warrants for 6/2/2025.
I'm gonna ask you guys to open it because we do have to make some changes to open both of them, annual and special town meeting warrants.
All right. So I gotta call out a separate motion for that, right?
Make a motion to open them and then I'll tell you what I think we need to do.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to open up the annual and special town meeting warrants for 6/2/2025.
So made.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Luanne, did you do a look on my memo?
All right.
For the special, we have to, there was a warrant article for the water department to purchase a truck. So that needed to actually just be moved from the ATM to the STM. So from the annual town meeting to the special town meeting. But the warrant article itself did not change. So on the annual town meeting, that was the only addition, I think, was just moving that to the special town meeting. For the annual town meeting, we're just removing the zoning map change. We didn't need it. We are not changing the zoning overlay district for the MBTA Communities Act. We're using the exact same PMUD overlay district that's already in place because that was getting a little bit crazy. And then the only other thing that I did was I added some explanations. I expanded the explanation on the MBTA Communities Act, Article 1 of the annual town meeting, just trying to clarify what's going on for anybody that may not know about that. And I wanna say there was one other explanation I worked on. The actual warrant articles did not change. And I will add the veteran additional tax benefit information under that explanation, the total cost to the town. I'll add that. So if you just approve those changes, that's really all that we have. Anything that I missed, Luanne?
I don't believe so.
Annoyed.
It was Article 12 for the truck that got moved.
Carlos, any questions or concerns?
Nope. Those are the questions and concerns I would bring up. So I'm glad they're being addressed. Yeah, and clarifying number one is the, let's face it, the majority of our people are probably gonna be there for that one and probably, hopefully they stay. But as far as Article Number 1, the overlay district.
MBTA Communities Act, yeah.
I pick that as clean as possible for everybody. You're absolutely right. Clarifying it makes it.
I did. I think I added $10,000 to fund the purchase of the land so that we could use that for closing costs. I'm wondering if we wanna add to that to use for engineering costs. In case we have to do some more extensive engineering, then I'll have the funding for at least the engineering.
Here's my problem. So if we, so we add, we don't wanna get too crazy, right? Because it makes it too hard for the, you know, makes it much harder for people to swallow, to look at the number. But we gotta be realistic about the engineering that could have to happen on that property.
Right.
What, I mean, I would think an easy, $50,000, easy.
I think so, yeah.
I think, I'm thinking more of $100,000.
That's what I was thinking, actually. $100,000, I think, in engineering.
The property in and of itself is, you know, rather large. So whenever you start doing anything engineering-based on it, it's gonna.
And for the grant that we're receiving, they want a geotechnical study for the library, which is a little more extensive than what you would normally, than just digging test pits, as we had talked about previously, digging test pits, by having Chuck go in and just making sure we're not gonna hit ledge or hit anything crazy or have soils that are not suitable. This is actually having an engineer witness the soils, do a report, make sure, I'd probably do a compaction test, make sure that it can hold the building. I mean, which I don't, I'm not expecting any issues with all of that, but we still have to do the work. So I don't know if you want me to add.
I would rather do a little bit more upfront and save us in the long run, right? You know, they talk about this building in that there was a large.
A million dollars' worth of site work here because we hit ledge, right?
Because we hit ledge, right? And that can be fixed with a $10,000 drilling to realize it out ahead of it.
So do you want me to change that to $2,550,000?
Yes.
And then that way, and I'll.
I'm only one. Carlos speaking.
I'll be honest, I guess I never, didn't really think about that. Well, I have, but not as far as on this article. For some reason, I was thinking that the library piece would cover it on their grant, but it's not for that purpose.
I think, I mean, I will pull as much out of that as I can. I'd have to go back and look at the language. I'd have to go back and look at the language of the article that we did at town meeting, right? Because some of our, it's our, it's the grant plus some of our funds. But I don't know that it specifically says engineering for this geotech stuff. There's gonna be other things that are just relative to this land as opposed to the library.
No, I agree with adding more money to it. Make sure we do it right. What I don't want is, like you said, we start digging and all of a sudden there's a whole mountain underneath us with a blast versus.
Right, and these are the things we're trying to find out before we purchase the land and make sure that it's good value for the town, that we're not just buying something that we can't use for the intended purpose, right?
Right. You're right. And the intended purpose of this thing is gonna be pretty vast. Like, you could use it for a lot of different activities, from council aging library, getting lectures out of schools, ball fields, more open space. There's a million things. This town is centrally located. So that way, you know, it's just going from one end of town to the other. Not that the town is big in that sense, but it's big enough for the people that live here, right? So keeping it centrally located is ideal for everybody. So, no, I agree.
So yeah, so I mean, I would, I would ask, I would do add $100,000 to that number. I'm, I agree.
I think that's all that we changed. So I'll just need a motion to make the, maybe make, add the, move the article from the ATM to the STM, approve the explanations, and change the, what article is that? Change Article 8 to increase the amount to $2,550,000 to purchase the land, including engineering, is what I wrote. Then you just need a motion to make those changes to the warrant.
All right. So I'm going to entertain a motion that we move the funding for the truck from ATM over to the special town meeting, that we change Article, Article 8 to reflect the new number of $2,550,000, which will include the engineering. And did I, I feel like I'm forgetting one.
Just, and we just approve the additional explanations.
Oh, and to approve the additional explanations that were added.
I wrote it down. Wrote it down somewhere. There it is. One, two, three. Yeah, you got them. So made. Motion made.
All right. I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
I'm sure we got them all.
Do we need your recommendations on the hand? Did, I don't think we've specifically done recommendations.
Yeah, I saw that in there.
Is that a different, more or not, is that different?
Article 6 is to confirm the recommendations as depicted on the warrant. So I don't know if there's anything that they wanna change.
All right. So we can just vote to close the warrant. I would do the recommendations first, though, and then close after.
Okay, yeah. All right. So then I'll move on to Agenda Item Number 6. Discussion vote whether to affirm the Selectmen's recommendation for the annual and special town meeting warrants for 6/2/2025 as depicted on the warrant. So right now, basically, with the exception of all the petitions, it shows that we recommend every article, which, well, let's face it, a lot of the articles came from us.
Right.
So I hope we would recommend them. Do you want, do you think we should go through each article and say whether or not?
I would say, I was gonna say that. Which ones do you not wanna recommend? I mean, you can take no position on the petitions.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I was gonna say, we take no position on the petitions, right? Well, I mean, that way.
Recommendations on the petitions. We haven't done that before.
So other than that, unless you don't wanna recommend them, you could just make a motion to recommend the articles as presented to you in the town meeting warrants.
Yeah. Any questions, comments? No?
No, I'm good.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to recommend all articles on special and annual town meeting warrants, with the exception of petitions that we take no, no position on for the meeting on 6/2/2025.
So made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the only, yeah, that's all set. So the only other thing is recommending Chuck's salary and Cheryl's salary, both elected officials. We talked about them at length at the meetings regarding the budget. But did we take that off? So it does ask for your recommendation in there. And Chuck's, we carried over the number that he requested as your recommendation number, but Cheryl's was different because I had changed the number. But I wanna make sure that you guys look at that and tell me what your recommendations are gonna be to town meeting for, because it does matter, you know?
Page 2 on the annual town meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, so you see Cheryl's number, the second column is what she requested. The recommendation is, that's my number. So that's not the select, that was my number in the budget. That's what I, I carried in the budget. So I just want your recommendation. Now Chuck's was flat, flat because, like I said, by the time I got to Chuck and everybody was asking for a ton of money, I was just like, you know what? This needs to come back before the boards to decide.
Well, and I think it was pretty clear with Chuck. We were, when he was in front of us, that we agreed with him.
Yeah, I think so. And I don't, I don't think anybody really fought back with Cheryl either. So I just, that's why I'm questioning it, because I just don't want to do her to service.
Yeah, I'm okay with recommending, recommending her.
The 79.
76626.
You guys wanna just.
I mean, she, she came to us with the numbers to back everything up, to show and.
Right, and that's why I say, you know, I was trying to kinda get her in line with the rest of, but then, so I just, I don't, I don't wanna misspeak. Those were my numbers and I wanted to make sure it was, that the board's numbers are on there correctly. So I will just need a vote for you to recommend the numbers as requested by, by the highway and town clerk, if that's what you wanna do.
Okay. You good, Carlos?
Yes, I agree with them.
Okay. All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the town clerk and highway surveyor's annual salary as requested.
So moved.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I just need a vote to close and finalize and close the annual and town meeting.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to finalize and close the annual and special town meeting for 6/2/2025.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have that Betterment number, right?
What?
The Betterment number one for the sewer thing.
I didn't get a number.
Okay, it's just a blank still. That's on page 5, Article 11.
Right, but we don't have a number.
I didn't, oh, I thought you might.
Gonna have to make a motion on the floor.
Okay.
So Agenda Item Number 7. Discussion vote whether to send a postcard to each household for the annual and special town meeting on 6/2/25, in which format to send. So obviously, we have, you know, some big decisions to be made and I wanna.
Attack the house.
Well, and for reasons of clarity, right? And making sure that everyone knows what's going on. And, you know, at the end of the day, this, you know, looking at what we have here is not a, not a large sum of money in order to make sure that we get, get the information out to the correct people, to, to, to everyone forever. So.
I do like the full sheet.
I, I agree. I think a postcard, based on the amount of information that we're giving, will make it too busy and make it so that people get lost in it.
Well, we have the MBTA Communities Act, right? And last time we did the whole back on that. That's what Lola's showing you. And I think that we wanna do something similar so that people have as much information as possible. I am gonna have an informational meeting on the MBTA Communities Act prior to town meeting to try to encourage people to come and ask their questions prior to town meeting so the town meeting can move forward. Hopefully, I can answer as many questions as I can with the town planner prior to the meeting. So this will be good. I'll add that information to the postcard if it, if it goes out soon enough. You know what I mean? I think in May 27th is when we talk about doing the meeting, May 27th, at this, right here in this room, to bring as much information as we can to people ahead of time and let them vent and, you know, similar to last year, but hopefully we can do it prior to town meeting for.
I also think there's one tomorrow, isn't there? One tomorrow as well, official meeting from the planning board.
Tomorrow is the planning board's public hearing on the MBTA Communities Act. I'll be going to that as well and trying to answer as many questions as I can. Procedurally, they're required to hold that public hearing before it can go on town meeting for.
Absolutely.
A warrant. So they're just procedurally following through what they need to do. My concern, obviously, is that we're gonna get a lot of people that are gonna be voicing their opinion about the trains and not really about the MBTA Communities Act. And, you know, there's really nothing I can speak to. Although I've started the process, you know, for the quiet zones, there's not a whole lot of information I have yet to provide, but I'll bring, I'll be bringing everything that I have. But, you know, it's like, as soon as you say MBTA, they think, oh, they're gonna come and talk about the horns and lots of noise, and I get it. But they're two different things. So I'm gonna try to educate people so that they don't come thinking that it's one thing when it's really something else. There will be the opportunity. I am setting up an informational session soon about the horns and the noise of the trains. I'm just not there yet. Gotta get through town meeting first, I think. So do you guys like the full sheet?
I like the full sheet.
I also like the full sheet.
I don't know that we need color. I mean.
I don't, I don't see the difference between the color and non-color. People are just gonna scan that code and all that's gonna pop up. That's in full color online?
Yeah, the only, yeah. Yes, and I mean, I guess, yeah, the only issue, the only part of color that I like is for that little map on the back.
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming it'd be shaded, right? If it's black. Like, what's the difference we're looking at here? Not much from the moonlight being black and white to the color of KLA, looking at under $100.
$50.
For the color?
For $50, let's go, I'd say go color.
It's about $200. It's about $200.
$200, yeah. Well, that's right, the full sheet versus the postcard.
Full sheet, yeah. Yeah, you know what? $200 bucks is probably worth it if it's gonna show on the map. And then I guess we could try, by doing that, we can do as much color as we want, right? So then maybe we can make it a little more appealing to grab people's attention. So, yeah. Never mind. I take that, I take that statement back. The only thing I worry about here that I'm wondering, Weird.
Yes.
But it's showing that it costs, I'm wondering if these two numbers were transposed because folded is cheaper than.
Yeah, because you're gonna send it out like this, folded, right? And if it's one sheet, it's probably more like a cardstock, like this. You know how you get those Anderson renewals?
Folded, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the, the cost associated with the company folding it. No, I think folding is fine.
So I like the folded part.
So, all right. We good with that?
Yep. Sounds like it.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to send out a full, full sheet, folded, colored, well, a full, full sheet. Sorry, it's been a long day. A full sheet, color, folded, list for the special and annual town meeting warrant for 6/2/2025. And then it would be to, this is weird to me. All right, so color and have it done by KLA Printing?
Yes.
All right. I have that motion?
A motion made.
All right, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry for hacking that one, man.
No, that's right. We'll keep, we'll keep you track.
I don't know why I was so guilty, you know? It's simple. All right. You know what? It's after, it's after 7 o'clock, so I can stop. So I'm, keep. All right, everyone. So I apologize, I have to reread everything again from the initial meeting. So I am going to open a public hearing that was continued from.
April 14.
April 14th, 2025. Verizon, New England Inc., and N-Star Electric Company, DBA, Eversource Energy request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way or ways, Chase Road. Install one JO mid-span pole on the east side of Chase Road, JOP 52 1/2. The new pole will be installed in line with approximately 30 feet south of the existing pole, JOP 52, and approximately 100, 101 feet north of his existing pole, JOP 53. The installation is being requested by Eversource to support a new three-phase, new three-phase service to 89 Chase Road and provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications and the transmission of high and low voltage electric current. Wherefore, they pray that after the due notice in hearing as provided by law, they are granted joint or identical location for the permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables, together with anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said pole to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here within marked one A seven W five EB dated February tenth, twenty twenty five. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires and above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of the said petitioners may desire for distribution purposes. Your petition, petition, wow. Petitioners agree that the space shall be reserved and maintained for the limited purpose of attaching one-way low voltage fire and police wires owned by the municipality or government, governmental entity for public safety purposes only. A public hearing to discuss the requested will be held on May fifth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Police Station Community Room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass. O two seven one seven. Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jarrett C. Zager, and Carlos A. Lopes. So with that, public hearing is now opened. So, welcome back. I know we have a couple of familiar faces. You know, based on our last meeting, there was some concerns regarding what was going to happen with it. No one really had any answers, so we said we would step back, we would try and get some answers, and, you know, come back before you with what was going on. Deb, I know you, you said you.
I reached out to John Mello on Friday. I was able to speak with him. He said that he is putting in a machine that bags manure and that the three phases needed for this manure bagger. And that's what he was doing. And that's what he's doing in the building, and that's what he needs the three-phase power for. And the only other comment that I have with Eversource is that, at the bottom paragraph where it says that they're going to reserve and maintain for limited purposes of attaching one-way low voltage fire and police wires owned by the municipality or government entity for public safety purposes. I'd like us to condition that on being able to add the fiber for any government purposes. Because that's what our plan is, right? We're going to be adding fiber to our poles, and I don't want to be restricted for safety, although you could say it's for cybersecurity. I just, I don't want to get into that kind of an argument. I want it for government purposes, any government purpose. We should be able to use space on the poles that go in our public domain. So I'd like to see if we can change that language for, from, at least condition it on that being, they can't do it unless we have that caveat put in place. So that's all I know about Mr. Mello. He was out of town and was not going to be able to make the meeting and who, I, I asked him to send a representative, and he didn't really have anybody that he felt he could send in his place.
I'm not big into understanding much about what a machine would do.
A manure bagger, I'm not sure.
Bags manure.
What is that?
Can you push the button on the mic?
On your thing?
So, is that in writing?
I have nothing in writing. I don't know what, where the application is.
Right, so, this is, this is the problem with everything. It's hearsay. Because I have stuff, when, I, I went to talk to Carl, and Carl said, oh, I'm going to talk to everybody. Where is it? Nobody's here. And he said, I want to find out about what kind of permits there. I had a request from the town to issue me permits that were issued to that property. So how does, he have the right, it's a recycling area. Where do you get the ability to recycle? It's not just for farming, because for farming, it's supposed to be used for the farm. Why do you need seashells to rot in the back for farming, for cows? What is, what is the purpose of that? I have a letter, I thought you guys were there to stand up for the rights of neighbors. This is coming from the Board of Health where Kevin goes out there, Gary probably liked to see this. It says, there's really no odor there. He, he got out, he could sell, he could have, there's some slight odor within fifty feet, but within a hundred and fifty feet, there's no odor whatsoever.
You've been smelling it all week?
There's no odor. Now, this is a town representative trying to protect us, neighbors, in, in a, this is a residential area. If I come back here with over a dozen people that can smell it from their property, so they don't even want to go out in their yard, is that something? Because I'm telling you, thi- this is fraudulent that someone would say, because I have other town officials that said to me, it's a problem. You said he's working on it. I said after I left here, I'm like, I can't do anything on my property where I think I'm working on it. Because I've gotten cease and desist from the town, within thirty days, you must do this or else here comes the fines. But with him, he's working on it. I, I don't want to swear, but I'd love to just be like, where does this go? I mean, you guys just let anything go. I don't hold it against John. I hold it against the town, and that's where I'm coming after. Because the next time, I will have legal rep when I'm here. Because this, this is what goes on. I mean, when someone says you can't smell it, in this, this is for farming purposes. Those thousands of pallets, he just told you it's for grinding manure. I got something for you right here. I saw with my own eyes, Saturday morning, he pulled in a tub grinder, okay? Guess what a tub grinder uses? Three-phase electric. Guess what, if you look up, just a quick Google, you'd think like you guys would be looking out for us. A quick Google, a medium-sized tub grinder produces sixty-six decibels of noise at three hundred feet. Who, the health organization, the World Health Organization recommends general daytime noise levels of less than fifty-five decibels? How far do you think he's going to run that? He's going to run it about a hundred feet, so now we're going to have stink, and you're going to have grinding, and you're going to have dust, and you guys are going to say, hey, he's just, that's just John, he's just doing what? Nothing's in writing. I mean, and nobody goes and says, hey, look, you got a toll to mark. You, you know, truckloads of stop and shop stuff comes in there. He's not using it. The farmers around the neighborhood are coming and taking it. The stuff he brings in is supposed to be for the farm. Not just a complete recycling center, because, oh, it's John and he has a farm, so he can do whatever he wants.
Why is there trucks coming?
But I can bring in lots of other people in town who, if they're not doing exactly to the letter of the law, the town's knocking on their door saying like, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this, you don't have the right to do this. This is why, you don't think it's a class action suit that all of us in the neighborhood can come back here? We could go to the bank and be like, my property is worth half the value because of what the town has allowed to happen. Who's going to buy my property? Who's going to buy his? And all the people around, where the seagulls are shitting everywhere, and the stink is every day, and you can't have a cookout. You got towner guys like you saying like, I can smell it, people are complaining, but then you got the Board of Health saying, it's not detectable. And you know what's cute about this? You know, I know a little bit about writing reports. There's no date on it.
I was just asking, what was the date on that report?
No date, exactly, thank you. So that's a cute way of doing it, like, I'm gonna, I'm going to try to do something so that I'm protected, but I'm not going to do it all the way. It's crazy. And to sit here and be like, he just said he's going to bag stuff, so he's going to make it nice. He, he's, but it's the town. It's you guys. It's the town. Because he's not going to do it. I can list tons of things that have been done that are, until he got caught, he didn't stop. And I, I don't know where we're going with this. I mean, I'm just telling you, like, if, if you guys think we're just going to prove this, that I'm putting on record that I'm being bullied by the town into just agreeing to something, because there's no, what is he doing with that tub grinder? And what is he going to start grinding all summer long? And then we're going to hear that and stink? I mean, you might as well just close yourself inside of your house and not come out. But yet, the tax bill comes, and the tax bill keeps going up and up and up for all of us. Brand-new police station, everybody wants all the nice things for the town, but how about standing up for the residents? You know, I wanted to come here and say, hey, I was, I went down to the town hall before Heidi got murdered, and I know this has nothing to do with it, and I said, you better do something else, someone's going to die. Guess what? It happened. We witnessed it. We lived with it.
Alright, we're taking this way too far.
Yeah, no, we're not taking it far.
I'm sorry.
We lived that for eight years, you guys.
Someone's going to hear that.
We suffered for eight years through that, and nobody did anything.
And now here we go, like.
And now this is starting.
Because I can tell you, twenty years, when I was in this property before.
I disagree with you, I'm just saying we're taking that down a whole different road that we don't need to take it down.
For eight years.
Well, this is.
We did not ignore that.
But can I, can I?
I did.
I can tell you.
You can enjoy your front yard and your backyard, right? Well, we haven't for ten years.
Okay, well, I'm saying that we very much.
Of this town.
Okay.
The reason why it said, the reason why it said is because on video, you were there with the building inspector before, and talked about our neighborhood, and both you guys like, I think they're working on. Well, I said, I, I think they're working on it. That was always the phrase, they're working on cleaning up. They weren't ever working on cleaning up anything over there. And again, we're, now we're going to deal with it across the street.
I commented that yesterday?
Yes, you and the previous building inspector, when it was COVID time and it was all on videos. Trust me, we lived it.
Years of pictures and videos.
I wasn't even here during COVID.
Yeah, we were in court with, with the property that you're talking about.
Different stuff, and, and I'm very much in favor of trying to help people, that's why I'm up here, sir. As is he, and all of us, right?
This is what I want.
I'm not doing this to put food on my table. I'm doing this because I love this town and want to help my neighbors, right? So, I very much hear you, and, you know, that's why we continued on, and that's why I'm saying, I don't understand what it requires to run a machine like that, nor do I understand what permits it has to happen. As far as a Board of Health issue, you know, that, that's something, I, I, I hear you loud and clear on the date thing, I, I do. But I, I don't want to comment on something that our Board of Health agent said or did, because.
Well, that said, from the last meeting, we're going to get information. Why aren't the people here? Because they don't care enough. The people that should be here to answer those questions, they're not here? Because they're just like, you know what? We don't care. We don't care.
I mean, we can continue it. He's in Florida for the week, and we can continue it.
And once again, I was just about to say that, that I don't need to, I, I, we, as a board, that are here today, don't need to approve it. Right? So I don't want you to think that I'm for someone because of who, no, I'm not, and I won't. And, and there's plenty of times where we don't rubber stamp things, so.
It's just, at some point, yes, are you getting the, the venom of ten, you know, over a decade? Yeah, you are. But at the same time, where does it start? Like, when does somebody actually listen to me and say, or to the neighborhood? And, and these people, like you said, you've noticed complaints, and when you see this report, you know how infuriating that is when he's like, I checked, it's okay? And this is the thing, like, we're all on mic, that's on there, but you know the talk around town? Everybody has an underlying of like, it depends on who you are and how things get done, and, and that's just the way it is. But that's going to come to light. I'm going to bring some people that will speak. And, like I said, I'm coming to legal counsel, because what do I have to lose? Half my property value? I already lost it.
We've lost a decade.
I mean, listen, I don't hold anyone different based on who, I have to look at the information that's in front of us, as, as does my fellow selectman.
That's what we're going to hold everybody to, it's like, just be fair.
And that's what we're trying to do, sir.
But what I would say is, when, when, in the past, many times, there's bylaws on the books, and people would say they're working on it. That's not enforcing bylaws, because I have, if I do the littlest thing, everybody drives, what's Frank doing, what's Frank doing? I get something. You know, the, the other selectman that's not here, I had an article from Excel Recycling, and he said, we have to live with previous decisions, it's not really our decisions. And I said, okay, how about now? Now you've got your own decisions to live with. Because as, as far as my understanding from the article on Excel Recycling, it was because arbitrary decisions were made by the selectmen. They weren't following bylaws. They weren't applying the laws equally to everybody. This seems pretty arbitrary.
But there is not a permit in front of us to run a recycling plant. That's not what's in front of us. So, you're getting confused. There's a permit for, to add a telephone pole.
Yeah, but.
There's not a permit for a recycling plant, and I haven't seen any, it hasn't come to the selectman's office. If you have proof that he's running a recycling plant, then I think that's what you need to bring forward.
If you're just following a line of common sense, you're putting in a three-phase, I just physically saw a tub grinder. What do you think that, that's recycling? We see trash trucks from Excel, from Easy Disposal all day. We see it. So, do I have to bring that, and then I said, I did a request from all town department heads, what permits have been issued to eighty-nine Chase? Still haven't seen some of the things that would allow those activities.
That, so that's a different issue, right? That's a zoning enforcement issue that you need to bring to the zoning enforcement officer. Because putting a pole in doesn't mean, I have had three-phase to my house, I'm not running a recycling plant. It, just because we allow this, and I, I'm not telling them what to do, but I'm telling you, this, like, I understand your argument. I understand what you're saying, that you believe he's running a recycling plant, but that, he hasn't applied for a permit that has come before this board. He, if he's doing that, then certainly is an issue. I, I'd have to go back and check the zoning. But that's the zoning enforcement officer. You certainly need to talk to Carl and the, you know, the zoning enforcement officer and say, look, this is what he's doing. If there's no permit, then he will take action about that.
I did talk to Carl. That's what I just said to you before.
I heard you say that.
I did say it. Where's the information?
So, so I guess, here, here's my thought, because we're just going to spin ourselves in circles, is, I'm going to continue this again until we can get a representative in here for the property. Okay? And, and because I, I mean, I don't know what else to say. I have to go based on, I say I, I think we have to go based off of what we have in front of us. I have you saying one thing, and then this other thing that's just basically to Debbie's point, is we're really not deciding on what's going to happen back there. We're deciding on whether or not to allow the three-phase onto that property.
But do you understand?
It's a pole, a pole, exactly. So where, that's what our jobs are, so sometimes what it is. But I also agree with you. I will say, I agree with you that you have to live sometimes with decisions that we're making, made in the past. So we try to, as a board, very much so, look at things from every angle. But we also have certain things that we can and not, can and cannot do on this board. There's certain things, I can't make a decision that Kevin can make on Board of Health, because what I do is completely different from Board of Health. Carl can make decisions that I cannot touch. What I can do is certain things. One of the things is, is I can grant or not the ability for Eversource to put, I keep saying I, we, to put in, and put in a pole that will support this three-phase. But if it makes you comfortable, what I'm saying is, is we can wait until, because I guess, how do I deny them? On, on what grounds? Because there's also the, the other side of it. You're looking at it from your side. I guess I look at it as, do we get sued from them for not allowing them to put in the pole? He'll say, I need this pole, it's within my legal right. You just need to speak in English.
I, I did research the next day. I spoke to Verizon. I asked them, can you please speak to Eversource? Of everybody's concerns, what's the power needed for, and so on. Their legal teams reviewed it and came back. We had no legal rights knowing what the power is being used for. Just like if they were ordering cable TV from Verizon, we don't have any rights to know what channels he's going to watch. It, you know, not trying to be smart, but, so, it, you know, Eversource's stakes are, three-phase is not uncommon, especially you get into these towns with lots of farms. It's actually more common than you would think. But they're like, yeah, we don't have the right to ask him and demand from him what, what he's going to use the power for. So it puts us in awkward position, because it's just a standard order. Somebody's ordering power or Verizon, you know, fiber services and whatnot. And, and that's all I can speak to. So I'm, I'm glad you were able to speak to the gentleman, because we also didn't have the right to demand him to come in. So, I tried to call the town about a week and a half ago. I spoke to somebody in the select board's office to. The person who I left the message for was on vacation, but to let them know that we can't demand the property owner to come in.
And I will research what we can deny it for. My guess is, you can deny it because it's in your, in the town-owned property. So you can deny the pole. The issue is, we generally don't deny poles. So I think that we would need something other than the fact that we don't like what the gentleman's using it for, because that's a different issue. We can issue the pole, the three-phase can go in. If he's using it to recycle, which is not allowed, they can still shut him down, whether he has three-phase or not. I think that, you know, to deny a permit such as this, it might be something like a safety hazard, like a, it's a road hazard, it's in the way, it's going to cause accidents. Things like that, that I think would be more appropriate to deny this type of thing for, just as precedent. But I can research that a little bit further. But I will ask you to go back and ask for the language that I just asked you for, because it's not in here at all. It doesn't even talk about the language that was in our public, right, you know, our public notice asking for the town's permission to use it for any government purposes. Because I wouldn't sign this as it's written anyhow. But I can further research and have that. In fact, I was thinking, maybe we do it on town meeting night, because town council will be here.
So we have, our town meeting is June second, and we always have a meeting beforehand, so that's what she's referring to. Town council will be there, so then we have that representation at the same time. Because listen, you, you might think that we're against you. I'm not against you. I, I care about my neighbors, right? I've lived in this town my whole life. So I just need to look at things from both sides of the coin, where I don't want to upset my neighbors, but I also, but we also don't want to be sued based on some simple mistake that we make now. So I think, I, I worry, that's why I worry. Okay, do I, if I say, okay, you can't have this, well then, we get sued, and then now we have to send legal counsel in to deal with this, and we're paying them, and then in the end, we still have to put the pole on, so.
My concern is the opposite of that. I don't think that you're out to get us. What I do think, though, is so many times in this town, I've been told, whether it's police, town officials, whoever, we didn't know that, we didn't know that. Now, there's been, again, I have to bring this up, there's been bonfires twenty feet high right beside me, I didn't know that. And town officials have to drive by this, that property every day to get to the police station and the town hall. I didn't know about that. That's the problem. It's like, now I'm here, I'm letting you know, and I'm not going away. Because I'm tired of everybody saying like, oh, I wasn't aware of that. And so when I tell you that this three-phase is going there for the tub grinder, it's going there for a tub grinder.
At this point, and, and don't take what I'm saying as being accusatory, I, I'm just saying that. I don't, I need proof of that, right? Like, I don't, I, I'm going based off of you saying, hey, I saw this. Well, they can say, well, hey, we didn't, we didn't bring it in. Now, it's like, so I'm just saying, I'm listening to you.
Because we have videotapes.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, I'm listening to you.
Yep.
And I'm saying, we'll continue this on and tell them that we need their representation there to tell us what they're doing. So that way, we have everything right in front of us telling us, right?
Yeah, I think, um, Louis was just talking about, yeah, we can have town council, but Louis was talking about, you know, town meeting, timeframes are tight. Do you want to, do, do you want to do it that night or not? I just, you know, we are for time.
Well, then we need to make sure we have town council here, right?
Right, town council will be there, I just.
I don't want to rush this either, right?
Yeah, no.
It's going to be a hectic night, and this, this needs attention. So I, I look at it like this, right? I, I'm listening to what you're saying, I wrote down most of it, right? We do care, right? In the day, it's a cow. Cow smells. Cow takes a crap on the ground, it's going to smell.
It's not.
You're talking to a kid who grew.
I know, I know, I'm saying, like, overall, like, as a farm, things smell, right? So, are they trying, like, I'm, I'm going through logically, like, are they trying to read, so I'm looking at, so I did Google this tub grinder. Well, it's massive. Is it on wheels or tracks? Do you remember?
It was pulled by a semi.
A semi, so it's, it's the big ones.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm concerned about noise as well.
Going in there at one forty-five in the morning. Shady business.
So, let, let's all take notes here then. What about the seashells? What's the purpose for that? And is that allowed? Is there a reason for seashells on a dairy farm? Five acres worth?
Seashells?
That's in the report, five acres. No smell, though. There's no smell from five acres of seashells.
And, and once again, we're going down the, and I'm not trying to kick it off, but we're going down a Board of Health issue, right, where.
This guy's, this guy's Board of Health.
I understand, but you can't.
Come on.
I'm seeing this, like, to protect him. He can't talk Board of Health issues right now because he's only one. He doesn't have a quorum. He, he's not on.
I'm just saying, we're talking here, so, because I was told that selectmen issue permits. Is that true?
Yes.
Some permits.
So then.
Yeah, some, I should say that.
So, so when I say to you what permits have been issued, and the last time we did talk.
So, like, a building permit and stuff like that is not through us. There's certain.
No, well, I'm not stupid. I know, I'm asking about permits to do different business there. And last time we were here, he said, we're going to check that, and you got, you're a selectman. So why don't we know the permits? Because I had town clerk send out a, a notice to all, all town officials.
Markets request, yeah.
And don't have any response. No response from selectmen.
When, when was this, you know?
It, it was on the fifth. They gave two, no, I'm sorry, it was, it was, it was given two weeks. So the deadline is five twelve. But it was two weeks from five twelve.
I'm looking right now.
I got something from you, Louis. I got something from you, Louis, so.
I am from the Board of Health.
I got something from you. So, yeah, so you got the email, so I got something from you.
Did she say that there weren't any permits?
I just, we just don't have them, and.
I don't have, that's what I'm saying, I answer the public record.
You answered, saying that we don't have any.
Yeah, so you represent the selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, so then what I'm saying is then, it, there's no permits for anything but dairy farm? That's all that says, this is dairy farm?
There's no permits through our office, so there's no permits for recycling. There's no permits, so that, there's no road opening. The permits that we issue, we don't have any. You should be getting an answer from the other departments on what permits they have.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if there was something that was of the nature of recycling, it would come through the selectmen.
Yes, I believe, well, I don't think we allow recycling, so.
Or whatever's going on.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's a farm, what are the guides to a farm? Because when you look it up legally, it's, everything that goes in there is for use of the farm, not use of, of anything I wanna do with it. It, it's just like an open window. And that's the reason why I'm making a stink about electric pole. I really don't care about the pole. What I care about is, once that's in, then I can do whatever I want, and nobody here seems to care about whatever else he is gonna do with it. And like I said, it's not him, it's the town. Why is nobody saying like, hey, this is a residential area? He has Janus Marie Way, where preferred concrete is, and there's just piles of, of gravel, and nobody's down there. And he could crush all the stuff, and he could do whatever he wants, there's probably three-phase down there. Why not there? The town never said, hey, you already have a spot for that. Not even two miles away, or let's say two miles away. But let's put this in a residential neighborhood and ruin all the residential.
Cause we haven't put up with enough already over there.
That's the point here. It, it's the common sense of like, the neighborhood of, like, you want a nice police station, you want things that, good for this, but like, the rest of the town, like, too bad. It's, we're not looking out for you. And that's what's going on. It's what's going on. I, I mean, it's.
So I guess.
And like I said, this is definitely proof. I'll, I'll, I'll give this to you if you wanna read it.
Okay, yeah.
I am curious to see which one that is.
I'm gonna bring it right up.
I don't have it, like I said, the, the beyonds, I don't have.
I mean, Kevin's embarrassed of this, because he can't, he can't print this and honestly believe what he says. So he just did it as a friend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I, I refuse, I don't wanna put words into Kevin's mouth about what he did, or, or, or comment on that. I'm just saying, you know, that's. So anyways, so, all right, so.
Do you wanna do it town meeting night? Cause you're, that's my only, you know.
Yeah, no, you, you bring up a valid.
Kevin will be there. They all have to come to town meeting. But we don't have a lot of time. Like, this conversation wouldn't happen.
You can do, give us the time, like, but I know your time is valid, like, so how do you guys? Is there ever a special meeting? Is it something we have to pay for, or say, we need to meet with the town heads?
No, I just don't wanna be cutting you short, because you have a lot of things to say.
Where we're like, well, we can't speak about it, cause he's not here. And we can't speak about it, cause he's not here.
Well, no, I think we're just doing it based on your, your concerns and ours as well, right? Where we wanna make sure that we get everyone the answers, and, and do what we can legally do. And hence, that's why I'm, I'm agreeing that, okay, let's get representation from him there. But I also want our legal counsel there, because I don't wanna go down another idea of, we're gonna be sued from residents.
You think so?
Or, or the business, right? So I'm trying to do and make sure that we do everything, and, and we pride ourselves as being as transparent as possible with stuff with everyone, so, um, so I'm just trying to think about.
We have a meeting May nineteenth. I can, I can't ensure that town council can be there, but I can certainly vet the information through town council, as you know. I am capable of that piece of it. And we can require Kevin and Carl to be present in the conversation, and ask Mr. Melo to send a representative. We can do that on May nineteenth.
Yeah, and, and let's try and get either counsel or, or one of their representatives here, you know, to.
Zoom in, maybe, we'll have to.
Yeah, yeah, worst case, zoom in.
Can I ask a question? Just more curiosity, regarding the tub grinder. Let's say, I'm gonna play the advocate here for a second. That is the case, right? Three-phase is coming for a tub grinder, keep it charged and whatnot, or moving around. Now, that does reduce the smell, right? Let's, I'm not saying, whatever it's for, if it doesn't, I, I don't know.
It doesn't.
First time looking at one right now, and I kinda wanna play with it more than, than look at it, right? Cause I wanna see how it all works. But I can only imagine how loud it is, right? Cause you're grinding things away, right? Rock, shells, whatever.
He's gonna grind those pallets, which you guys can all see, as you drive by. There's how many thousands of pallets there? That's what he's gonna grind.
Oh, yeah, it does grind pallets. Yeah, I'm just looking, I'm just going through the images that you told me to look at.
I know a few things.
So, so thank you for bringing that up to our attention. I, you know, that's, now, when I hear grinder, I'm thinking it's picking up cow patties, and it's composting it, and it's reducing smell, so we went for the neighborhood.
This grinder over here that makes mulch, think of that.
Okay.
And then throw pallets in it.
Good perspective, yeah.
And just grind them up.
So I think, I, I hate having to keep rehashing this, but I think.
I wanna be clear.
Me too, sir, like, honestly, I do. I, I know, so, um, so, all right, so, um, yeah, I, I guess I'm gonna.
As the applicant, are you gonna be available on May nineteenth or June second?
Um, I will do my very, very best.
You getting time and a half for this?
Sadly, no, I get to drive an hour and a half to get it, everybody's sorry. I wanna make everybody happy.
Yeah, can you come in on, we assume?
Yeah, maybe we're gonna do a Zoom option, so that might be easier for you?
Yeah, that'd be great, because I do not demand the property owner to come down. You know, it would be wonderful if he started up heading to.
I don't think that we can demand it either, but we can request. And I think if he wants to get this in, he'll, he, he'll make himself available. He is out of town, I, I, so I think otherwise he would be here. Um, but if we do a Zoom option, then at least you're not driving.
Yeah, it would be wonderful, so either day, both days, evening, I'll make myself available. I, I would love to see this wrapped up, make everybody happy.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's not you. Trust me, if, I think you should just be able to be like, rubber stamped at home. Uh, you don't need, but.
So, um, so I'm gonna, I am gonna say we go to the five nineteen meeting, because, um, I, I don't want to.
Cut people short.
Cut people short, yeah.
If we could for the next meeting, get a detailed explanation of what the three-phase is for, explain what, what the grinder is for, what the, all the uses that's gonna be for, so that we have a clear understanding, and no questions are being asked at the last second. Raise them, please do.
Please, the seashells.
Ask the sea, about seashells.
How does that legally apply to a dairy farm?
I don't know that there's any rule against bringing seashells into your property, though.
Are you serious?
I am serious.
You, you, that is bio, it's a, that's bio, biomaterial. You can't bring biomass in to decompose, that's what it's for. Actually, in his report, it says it's a compost pile. So you're bringing biomass into an area that didn't belong there, that's not for the cows, that has no other purpose but to make money?
I'm just telling you, I don't think there's anything in our zoning laws that doesn't allow, but that's a cow decision, so.
It's a compost.
So, um, yeah, well, hopefully we can get the right people here, and the third time's the charm. So, all right, so with that, um.
Cause that's not gonna let up. The, the, the issue of his property is not gonna let up until it's known of like, what is the, what's, you know, what's the limits here? Just anything goes?
Anything goes, just that anything went.
Anytime? Cause why the trash trucks coming and going? That's what you, put that on your list, trash trucks. Trash trucks coming and going.
There it is. Oh, that's, that's, I have questions here.
Yeah, what's that all about?
What about dirt bikes and smells?
I, I mean, it's not cow farm, but.
All right, so.
Cause at one point, if I have to hire outside someone to do the health inspecting, and then, then I'll come with a couple dozen people signed up to say, this stinks. And then let Kevin say, I mean, maybe Kevin's got a nose problem, I don't know. But at some point, stop, stop patronizing us and telling us that everything's fine.
Exactly.
Well, I don't think it's the intent of trying to patronize anybody, I, I.
Well, it's not fine. But when Kevin writes a report that says it's fine, I'm not gonna get over that. I'm not gonna get over that.
I, I can respect that, I can respect that.
Because you try to go out in your yard on a Saturday afternoon, when the sun is shining, to have a cookout, and it stinks like rotten seashells.
We always thought it was Heidi's house.
It's not even close.
Heidi's no longer here.
Right.
Or her community.
But I, I don't care if you talk to people that work in the post office, that are postal, like, that drive the postal truck, that work in this town, I can just name people, but I'm not gonna bring it up on this. And then when you say to me like, oh, seashells, it's okay, I'm like, how about the common decency of the neighborhood?
All right, so we're not gonna, and I, I appreciate it, um, but we're not gonna.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna solve anything else tonight, so.
And you guys, your email is public, right?
Yes, sir.
So then I will send some other things to just say, please, these are the bullet points that we're looking for. Because like you said, the purpose of this is not to come down here and yell at you. The purpose is to say, I wanna be heard, we need answers, and we want it done fair for everybody. I've said to John's face, John, make ten million, I don't care, just don't destroy the neighborhood. But that goes in one ear and out the other. So now I'm here to say to you guys, help protect the neighborhood. That's what I'm saying.
We hear you.
So I'm not here to.
All right, so with that, um, I am gonna continue the public meeting, notice to, while this public meeting till five nineteen twenty twenty-five. Do I need to, do I need to do a motion for that, you think?
Seven o'clock.
Oh, at seven o'clock, at the Freetown Police Community Station. All right, so. Back to, um.
You had to make, you made that motion.
All right, so, yeah, all right, so I, that's what I'm saying, I'm sorry, I was asking, I don't know, I need a motion for that. So, all right, so with that, I entertain a motion to continue, um, the, um, public hearing to five nineteen twenty twenty-five at seven P.M., uh, at the Freetown Police Community Room.
So moved.
All right, well, second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You know what that means? I think you bring coffee next time. Third time, so that's on you. Oh, it is single de Mayo.
It is single de Mayo, so. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
It might be online.
No, I mean, I just, I want it to be able to be used. You had it on the public notice. I don't know where that came from.
I'm, I'm actually down here representing my other colleagues, who, this is her project. I'm gonna focus on this.
Lucky you.
I, I just wanna make sure that I'll, I'll remind her that, hey, she had that in.
Yeah, so, so this says, your petitioners agree that space shall be reserved and maintained for the limited purpose of attaching one-way low-voltage fire and police wires owned by the municipality or governmental, for public safety purposes only. I want that to be changed, that we can use space on the pole for gov, any government purpose. Cause we are in the process of putting fire, but to connect our buildings to each other, um, not necessarily just police and fire.
Yeah, so. You can tell, you're town only, and I'm saying general town government, you're.
Yeah, for, for, for our government purposes, and for government purposes only. So it's not to sell bios, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just so that we can connect our, use space on the poles to connect.
I can't tell you how relieved I think you have the answer, because I didn't wanna tell anybody that, hey, legally, we're not entitled to that information, so I'm so happy.
Well, he, I mean, he was, he was pleasant, he was going out of town, so, um, I think he would've come otherwise. So we'll get him here, if possible, and we'll go from there.
Good luck to everyone.
You as well, and thank you again.
And I do worry that, you know, I wouldn't want you guys getting sued over the property owner, like, you know, you can't demand, um, demand what you use in the power, so I hope they have qualification, uh, they could, I'll protect it.
Yeah, we'll do our due diligence.
Sorry, sir. And thank you again, and I apologize.
I mean, this is the ugly part of my job, this is where I, I don't get to see the ugly part. Good luck, everyone.
You as well, thank you.
All right, do you have, um, where you can send the Zoom link? Yep, okay.
All right, agenda item number eight. Discussion and vote whether to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and Coastal Medical Billing, uh, for ambulance and billing services, seven one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-eight. It looked pretty straightforward, I was trying to get to the.
The board already awarded it to Coastal, and it's a three percent.
That's what it was, all right, all right, so, um, all right, any questions or concerns?
No.
No, all right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town of Freetown and Coastal Medical Billing for ambulance billing services, seven one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-eight.
So moved.
All right, well, second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, agenda item number nine. Discussion and vote whether to approve the public entertainment on a Sunday license for St. John Newman Parish Annual Lakeside, oh, Lakeville, I think it's supposed to be Lakeside Festival on five twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five twenty twenty-five, from noon to eleven P.M. So, anyone who's lived around here knows that this has been a well-attended event for a long time. Um, and they did the right thing, and made sure that they got their permits to be able to have music and everything go on, um, on the Sunday. I looked, and it looks like everything here is filled out correctly, and, uh, it's for, it says amusement rides, car shows, live music, and miscellaneous performers. So I look forward to it, and hopefully it's a well-attended event again this year. Any questions or concerns?
I was just reading the Fiesta Shows, heard of the amusement rides, I'm assuming that's the same thing.
Yeah, the, I think Fiesta Shows is the company that brings in all the rides, yeah. Any questions?
No, that's, I'll be there. Come on down, folks.
All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the public entertainment on a Sunday license for St. John Newman Parish, uh, Annual Lakeside Festival on five twenty-five twenty-five, uh, from noon to eleven P.M.
So moved.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number ten. Discussion and vote, uh, to list out specific street names designated in the Sonnet Bay Show's thickly settled district as listed in Attachment A, per Mass DOT request, and to authorize the town clerk to send a letter to the Mass DOT listing these streets. Uh, so if you remember, we, um, decided to change it and make it that it was a neighborhood-wide event that everywhere need to be twenty-five miles an hour. Uh, and it looks like we were, um, they came back to us and asked us to put in, um, the specific streets to them. So, um, it's really just a procedural thing to fix it, just to make sure that we have all the streets attached.
Absolutely.
So, um, I do have a proposed motion that I am gonna read off. Um, I move that the Board of Selectment formally designates the following streets as comprised in the Asona Bay Shores neighborhood for the purpose of establishing a thickly settled district pursuant to the Mass D O T regulations in accordance with the board's prior vote to implement a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in that area. Asona Boulevard, Baker Street, Beach, Beach Street, Berkeley Ave, Borna Vista Ave, California Avenue. I should say, um, Borna Vista Avenue, California Avenue, Causeway Road, Central Avenue, Cliff Drive, Cove Lane, East Public Street, Evans Street, Glenn Street, Gull Lane, Hollywood Avenue, Idaho Way, Lock Lane, Nevada Avenue, North Hillside Street, Point Street, Short Street, South Hillside Street, Valley Street, Washington Street, West Public Street. Further, I move the town clerk to authorize to submit a revised certification letter to the Mass D O T listed, listing the aforementioned streets.
That's a lot of streets for a small area.
It is.
I, uh, I entertain that motion. I'm sorry, I make that motion.
Alright, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And some of those streets, if you can do twenty-five miles an hour on them, God bless you, because my street's about two hundred feet long, so. Agenda item number eleven, discussion and vote whether to accept the following donations. A, fifty dollars from Steven Vincent for general support of the Council on Aging. Um, and then, B, fifty dollars from Romeo and Deborah. My.
Messier.
Messier, I should've known that, for general support for the Council on Aging. Um, so, pretty straightforward, and I, uh, obviously wanna thank both parties for the donation to the Council on Aging.
Absolutely.
So with that, I entertain a motion, uh, to accept, uh, the following donations as written.
A motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number twelve, discussion and vote whether to create a, a committee to make rules and regulations for harbor, shellfish, moorings, and other waterway-related needs.
So this is in regards to, you know, last year, the Harbor Master and the issues that we had with the harbor, not having any rules and regulations in place. And we, um, have, um, Mr. Ganon, Ganon from Somerset, but, you know, he kinda only said he would do this temporarily, it's becoming boat season yet again. So, I thought, I don't know who's, he's given us copies of rules and regs that we can start with, but who's gonna solidify these and come up with them? So I didn't know if it's something that you think we should get a committee together, um, of those people that, um, either live, you know, live on, on the, uh, bay, or the ponds, or whatever, and, and those people that also have boats and that use the way, the waterways, to come up with rules and regs that make sense for the town. I'm not sure where you wanna go with this, but, believe it or not, it's been probably almost a, almost a year.
It's crazy. Time flies and you're having fun.
I know, last time we, we got the, was it Somerset, Swansea?
Yeah, that's who she's talking about, yeah.
So he, I know, I was looking at it yesterday, alright, cause I still have the paperwork that we printed out, from what he did in those areas, they're brand-new ones. It, wouldn't it be, in my head, I'm looking at it going, instead of having, I think the residents at some point need to get involved in it, but I think we established the baselines, right, to get the standard operating procedures in place, based on what local localities have done. Then take it back to the residents and say, hey, this is what we're proposing. What is, what don't you like, or do you like about this, right? Cause I think we do it the other way, we're gonna get a lot of feelings involved in that versus the law. Let's get the laws out of the way first, before.
So, you want me to draft, draft policies based off of, on other towns, or I'll work on it?
Well, there's some, I'm sure there's some generic language in there, right? Take the generic language from those drafted policies from other towns, right, as a baseline at a minimal, so that we have a good foundation as to how do we move forward next. Cause what I can see in this, cause everyone's, from previous experience dealing with this, right, or hearing about this, we have a lot of passionate, passionate individuals that wanna be involved and, and wanna help in one way or the other, which is great. And I encourage that. But there's already established procedures at other towns. So instead of reinventing the wheel, let's take the wheel, land, leave it here, right, and then adopt from, based on the generic information, based on those. And then, if there's something you need to, sort of Bay Shores, or wherever.
I'm gonna draft them based on other towns.
Okay.
Then I'm going to set up a public hearing or something here for discussion, and invite those people that we know are interested, but open it up to townspeople that wanna come and make comments, or, or even put it up on our webpage or something for a comment period for those issues that they want, might wanna address.
Yeah, I.
We can hash them out.
Yeah, and I actually like that because then I started thinking of, well, like, we need to then make up, we need to become, we need to do a makeup of a board. Right? We need to, we need to give that board a charge, we need to go through all that stuff for them to be able to make recommendations to come back to us, for us to do stuff, and then we have to have a public. So I almost like that, that we come up with something ahead of time, generic in nature, and then have people come in, kinda hash it all out, and then I think it'll make things a lot faster.
Okay.
And, and I actually think, as much as it seems like it, I think it'll actually create less work, long run.
Probably, but I just, I just need to get it moving in some direction that we don't, you know, as you know, we've been doing nothing but creating policies since I've been here for three years, so.
So, so, I guess, he did give us some literature, but do we go to him and see what he has, like, in his current town and say?
He did, he did give me.
He did, yeah.
I have stuff, I do have stuff, and I can always pull from, I mean, I can pull from any town. They, you know, towns are, towns are generally gracious. It's just like us, when other towns ask us for stuff, we give them what we have. Um, if I ask, you know, one of the other towns, like, say Plymouth, they must do a lot of voting and stuff, I can say, hey, can you send me yours, and we can pick through it, I can pick through it, and, I mean, we do that with everything, right? You pick through, you pick and choose what makes sense to your town.
Kind of the commonality is between everything, and start with that, and then find the things that might be a little bit different, but then, Somerset might have some stuff that's similar to your point, and then.
So I can start that process, and like I said, schedule a meeting sometime in maybe July, cause we're just so busy.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, invite the people we know that are interested, and pub, try to get it out there publicly that we're gonna have this meeting, so if anybody, and I can always post it, like I said, for comments, too. Hey, make, so if you can't come to a meeting, make the comments, and we'll address them at the meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think long-term that that's a better, easier solution.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll save us some time.
So, alright, so, based on that, um.
I don't really need a motion.
I was gonna say, I really don't, I'm not gonna make a motion to not recommend it, right, so it doesn't make sense, sorry. So I'm just gonna leave number twelve alone. Uh, discuss, on thirteen, discussion and vote on awarding the request for quotes on voting booths. So, this, um, we got some quotes that came in. Looks like only one quote, right?
She sent it out to three, and she received one quote back.
Yeah. Alright, so, makes it easy to vote on who, right? So the only one we got back was from Casto and Harris. Looks like the final amount is sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven, and she had, um, she did have some grant money. That was, that she had. Um, so she, she can cover everything through her own budgeting process, so, I don't see anything else.
I'm just wondering what they are. I know they're voting booths.
Yep.
That's all they are, is voting booths for sixteen thousand dollars? I'm just wondering if, like, hate to say this so rudimentary, wouldn't a blanket cover people, or like a little partition?
Well, based on the way that voting rules and regulations are now, I can guarantee that it's probably far more in-depth than we would like to think about it.
I, I'm sure it is, I'm just.
I can look it up if you want me to. Didn't include that in here, but there's thirty-six voting booths, um, with metal, the metal booths with plastic privacy panels, and then three all-metal.
I mean, listen, it's, it's pretty much all grant-funded, right, based on what she has, so it's, I mean, it's not, not that I wanna be frivolous with money, but I'm just saying that it's not like it's coming.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, like, you know, what the, what their purpose, I'm sure there's rules and regulations for them, but then I start thinking, going down the rabbit hole of where we're gonna store them, who we're gonna move them, it, it, my head starts spinning when I look at thirty-nine metal and plastic booths.
Yeah, I'm assuming that, that's pretty much what they're. Replacing what we currently have.
Okay.
Right, cause that's kinda what those are.
Okay.
So.
They fall over, you know how they wobble?
Yes.
I'm trying to see, I wanna say in something she submitted, there was pictures, but, I don't know.
I don't, I only see the.
It, it's, she's pretty frugal things, too, so she's getting them, there's a need for them, but if you're saying that we're getting rid of the old ones, these are the replacements, then.
I don't know if it was in the quotes. I saw pictures, though, somewhere.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on here.
Yeah, it's just that one quote.
Um, alright, so, yeah, I mean, it, at this point, I say it, but it is what it is, it's, you know, we only got one quote, and, um, to your point, if she needs them.
Right.
And, but we're gonna go with, so, alright, so, um, with that, I entertain a motion, um, to award, um, wait. I, I entertain a motion to, um, award the request for quotes for, uh, voting booths to Casto and Harris.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item fourteen, discussion and vote whether to approve and sign the quote, uh, between the Town of Freetown and Casto and Harris for the voting booths, so.
Do you wanna see what they look like?
Of course. And as soon as you see them, you'll be like, oh, those are, that's what we're talking about. That's what I figured they were gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, okay. Obviously, people at home can't see that, but it's very straightforward.
It's what there's there now, which is updated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, alright, so, back to agenda item number fourteen, I, I called it out.
Uh, yes, uh, motion made.
Alright, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number fifteen, discussion and vote whether to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown, Freetown and Netrospect LLC for I T supports, services effective seven one twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-six. Um, you know, this was an existing contractor that we've used, and, everything's pretty straightforward, just a update to the, um, to the agreement.
Yeah, plenty of I T in town that needs, needs some work.
Well, it's not that Lorraine can't do. She does plenty over there, so, alright. So, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Netrospect LLC for I T service, uh, I T support services, effective seven one twenty-five through six thirty twenty-six.
So moved.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, agenda item number sixteen, discussion vote, um, to designate the C O A Library Community Building, Community Building Committee to act on the Selectmen's behalf to sup, uh, select the O P M and designer for the C O A Library Building Project.
Yeah, we're not sure we can do this because Carlos is on this.
Oh, she won't be able to vote on the other one?
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Put it on the next meeting?
Yeah, so, alright, so, um.
Move it to the next meeting?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pass on that, that's a, that's a good call out, obviously.
Well, yeah, I should call that out, uh.
Thank you, Lorraine. We're gonna pass on that, and now, I am gonna pass it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, agenda item seventeen, acknowledging the resignation of Sharon Dorian as Senior Librarian effective six eleven twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Sharon, for your service to Freetown and the library. Uh, item agenda eighteen, discussion and vote whether to approve the following appointments. A through E. A, Patrick Lee as Acting Sergeant on a four-two schedule, effective five-one twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-five. B, Lauren Goyette as Beach and Boat Ramp Seasonal Manager, effective six-two twenty twenty-five through nine-three twenty twenty-five. C, Harrison Goyette, as Seasonal Parking Control Officer, effective five-fifteen twenty twenty-five through nine-three twenty twenty-five. D, Jameson Byers, as Seasonal Parking Control Officer, effective five-fifteen twenty twenty-five through nine-three twenty twenty-five. And E, Joshua E. Simmons as Laborer for Highway, effective five-six twenty twenty-five through six thirty twenty twenty-five, uh, pending, um, as, at a background and, and appointment checks are all verified and all set prior to, um, his effective date. That said, any questions, concerns, or comments?
No, very straightforward, thank you.
That said, I entertain a motion to approve the appointments read as item agenda eighteen, A through E.
Motion made.
All in favor?
You can second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You, alright, so now we're ready to sign some, some documents.
And this one's just for you, same thing, this is associated for you.
What do you mean? Fourth hour.
Voting booths just for you. And that respect for both of you. Did you happen to see the email I forwarded you regarding the Tuesday lunch program at the C O A?
Yes, it's a little beam in the paper, or magazine?
It's gonna be, yeah, highlighted in, um, Massachusetts Updated Age and Dementia Friendly Action Plan from the state. So it's, you know, accolades to Rebecca and her team over there at the C O A for knocking it out of the park with that program. Um, that's, you know, like a badge of honor, and, uh.
No, and, and, to your point, is it's, it's what they should be, it's nice for them to, uh.
Thank you.
Get recognized.
Yeah, it is, and, you know, it's a lot of work that's gone into that, and, and it's in a, you know, it's definitely a team effort over there. Um, so I just wanted to mention it to you, I know I sent it to you, but I.
Well, you did.
I just want her to, you know, I told her to pat herself on the back, and, and her home team, you know, she'll say that it's a team effort, and it, and it, it very much is, when you go there, you can tell that it's a team effort, so.
I, I like ending stuff on a positive note.
Yeah, and it's always nice when, um, you get funding in it, and we, and you use it, and you knock it out of the park, right? Like, cause then they wanna give you more, and so, uh, kudos to that team over there, and I don't know if you saw this week, the picture that I took with the Fire Department and Senator Roderick's, um, and all of, most of them, and their new, their.
Turnout gear.
Um, turnout gear that, uh, Senator Roderick's was able to fund for the Fire Department of sixty-five thousand dollars. Except, you know, the chief didn't get himself a new outfit, but everybody else got new outfits. And they were, uh, I, I shout out to, uh, Bugsy Stevens Auto, because they allowed them to use their yard. They set up cars for them, one on the, one on their roof, one on the side, so that they could test their new equipment and, and train on how to open cars and do whatever they were doing, so, um, that was real, really nice of them to allow us in their yard to, to do that, and they, and like I said, they even set the cars up for the Fire Department to work on.
Awesome.
So that was a fun time, I was, I was there, um.
Did you get to use any of the equipment?
Huh?
Did you get in there? Did you use any of the equipment?
I, I didn't, um, I didn't, I, I have my own equipment, so. But I can play with it if I want, I'm sure my brother would say, hey, go to work, but no, I didn't. Alright, I think I'm done signing.
Alright, did you have anything else?
Yeah.
I think those are the two things, I'm, I'm, I'm losing my steam, so I might've forgotten something, but.
Uh, that's okay. So, alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.